Over this meeting in the Chair's absence, as we begin, I'd like to review a few housekeeping items for remote participation. Public participation. Public comment will be solicited during each taxable agenda item. Once I ask for a public comment on an item, please click, raise hand, or go to webinar in order to make public comment. Before being individually identified, all members of the public will be muted. Village staff will announce the speaker by saying their name and unmute their audio to allow up to three minutes for public comment. Once called, please state your name and address for the record and proceed with your comments, speaking clearly during the allocated time. Do not use the chat or question function or go to webinar as these functions will not be monitored during the meeting. Please limit background noise to the extent possible. As a reminder, this meeting is viewed live on Comcast Channel 18 or streamed at www.palmbeach.com/youtube. Like anyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we begin by getting approval for the, oh, excuse me, ask, Martin, we did a roll call first.
Yep. Chairman Adam Miller. Vice Chairman Philip Markey.
Speaking here.
Commissioner David Leland.
Here.
Commissioner June Perrin. Commissioner Lauren McKellen.
Present.
Cara Derry, alternate one.
Present.
And Kamara Williams, alternate two.
Here.
That's it.
Thank you. Can I have a approval of the meeting minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July 25 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved, four to nothing?
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, five, nothing.
One, two, three, four. Who's five?
Mr. Williams.
Two there, all right. Items for discussion. Item one, application number 22-70, LW CarMax. The applicant, CenterPoint Integrated Solutions LLC, is requesting two landscape waivers as follows. A waiver for section 5-133D to eliminate the single terminal island and allow for planting and the required planting of adjustment landscape areas where the village code requires single terminal islands at the beginning and end of each park and row containing the required landscaping. And B, a waiver to end each park and row containing the, I think I went along here, waiver section 615133 to eliminate a double terminal island, allow the planting of the required planting and adjustment landscape areas where the village code requires double terminal islands containing the required landscaping for a property located at 10501 Southern Boulevard. Is there anyone here from CarMax? You have?
Anybody, Mr. Chair, if I could swear them in. Anybody who's going to be speaking on your item today, if you could all stand and raise your right hands for me, and I'll swear in staff at the same time, please. Do you all swear from, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And I'll turn back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item.
No.
I spoke with the applicant.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Do you have a presentation, or?
I do have a presentation, yes.
I think, Mr. Markey, I think staff will make their presentation and then they'll turn it to you.
Right.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just give me one second. Thank you. Good evening again. Chair Commissioners, Josue Ledger, for the record. The application before you is 22-70 landscape waiver. The applicant is requesting two landscape waivers as follows. A, from section 15-133, parentheses, D, to eliminate the single terminal island and allow for planting for the required plantings in the adjacent landscape area where a village code requires single terminal islands at the beginning and end of each park and row containing the required landscaping. And waiver B, from section 15-133, parentheses, E, to eliminate the double terminal islands and allow for plantings of the required, um, plantings in the adjacent landscape areas where village code requires double terminal islands containing the required landscaping for property located at 10501 Southern Boulevard. The landscape plan shows the location of the proposed expansion, so this slide illustrates the landscape plan. The, um, green shaded area represents the, um, overall inventory and storage area of vehicles with no indication of striped, um, parking spaces, therefore, no single or double terminal landscape island is provided. Um, this area, as highlighted in green, as mentioned earlier, uh, village staff is not in support of this waiver request because staff believe that there are multiple other, um, car dealership with similar circumstances that have provided these landscape terminal islands. Um, furthermore, section 2-75.28, subpart C, landscape insight treatment outlines to review criteria for landscape plans, um, which are as follows. Uh, I will go over all of the requirements, however, some of the important ones that we believe, um, support staff's recommendation will be, um, grades of walks, parking spaces, terraces, or other paved areas shall provide an inviting and stable appearance. Landscape treatment shall be provided to enhance architectural features, um, and provide Staff requests, uh, recommendations of now to be submitted to village council regarding application number 22-70 landscape waiver and, um, order number LW 23-04. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So you have something for us?
I certainly do. Um, for the record, Christina Belenky of Duney, Miskin, and Backman. If you need my address, it's 14 Southeast 4th Street in Boca Raton. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Um, I do have a presentation, if we can get that up on the screen here.
Can you send it back?
Perfect, thank you. Um, so we definitely did want to provide you with a little bit more details as to our request. Um, the first request is the, uh, number one items, the two landscape waivers, as noted. Essentially, it's to eliminate the terminal landscape islands, the single being where there's one row of parking, the double where there's two rows of parking. So the terminal islands at the end of the parking, uh, rows would be eliminated. Uh, we are not proposing to eliminate the required plantings. We are proposing instead to push that to the perimeter of the staging area, and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail throughout the presentation. Um, but first, I did want to provide you with a little bit of background about CarMax, who they are, what they do for the community, um, and so we do have a representative of CarMax here this evening to share some of those details.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My name is Brian Pulsofer. I'm part of CarMax's Design and Development Group out of Richmond, Virginia. Our address is 12-800 Tucko Creek Parkway, Richmond, Virginia. If you're unfamiliar with CarMax, we're the nation's largest retailer of used vehicles. We have over 240 store locations nationwide. Right now, if you were to go online and try to purchase a vehicle, you could browse over 50,000 used vehicles. Last year, we sold over 800,000 retail vehicles, and then in addition to that, we sold over half a million wholesale vehicles around the nation. So since we started about 30 years ago, our, uh, business has catered to the customer and associate experience. So every detail we have onsite, how we design our buildings, how we lay out our parking, uh, how our business operates, all caters to the customer experience. And our associates, as far as our associates go, uh, we've been 19 years in a row Fortune 100 top places to work for in the country. We also are very involved with our communities. We have a couple, uh, a few national partnerships, and we also allow our associates, our local associates at each store, to then partner with their own communities and their own organizations and, uh, passion projects. That's a little bit about CarMax.
Okay, and Brian's going to stay up here for a moment, um, because he's going to talk about the operations of the staging area, but I wanted to bring you back to phase one. Um, for those of you that were on this commission, you may remember when we came through about five years ago. Um, for some of you, this might be a little bit new, but just to recap, um, we did come through with approvals through the village, again, roughly five years or so ago, for the western portion of the site, about western half of the site. Um, so you'll see a long Southern Boulevard, that area in the front closest to southern, that's a sales, um, display area. So it is an area that is fenced off, but, um, it's intended to display the vehicles. Um, I guess to the north, um, the northwest side of the site, you have your customer and employee parking areas, and this is your traditional parking areas, where you have your traditional striping, your traditional landscaping, where customers are going to be parking, where employees are going to be parking, they're going to be walking around, um, going into the sales building, um, and that's really where the majority of people, both employees and customers, are parking. Um, you then have the staging area for the existing phase, um, kind of in that purple shade. And so this was, uh, the staging area that was previously approved. It is a smaller area, um, and essentially is where vehicles are prepared for sale, for auction, um, and I'm going to let Brian come back and talk a little bit more about the operational needs of those staging areas.
So when we first developed, uh, phase one, uh, we developed what we needed at the time for our business needs. So as those needs have changed over the last couple of years, we are in need of more space onsite. So a couple of years ago, we, uh, we developed, um, an instant offer tool. So what that is, is you as a customer, if you're looking to sell your vehicle, you can go online, plug in your VIN number, and we'll give you, uh, a cash offer valid for seven days. So since we've implemented that tool, we've, uh, been buying a lot of cars nationwide, and with that comes the need for more space. And with this site right now, we are constrained for our space. So now, uh, a little bit about the phase two development. Most of the site is going to be staging area, which is an expansion of what Christina already mentioned in the rear of our sales and service building. That is for associates only. It's a staging of vehicles for, uh, for retail sales and auction. We will be providing an auction building onsite, which is a use previously approved with phase one. Uh, we also will have additional customer and employee parking on the north side and some more truck parking on the east, east side. Again, this staging area is not for the, the general public, it's for associates only, so associates will have access to moving vehicles in that area. Retail customers will not be brought to that area to browse vehicles, they will be brought to the existing, uh, sales staging lot.
Thank you, Brian. Um, and so you can see along the northern border of the site, where we do have that circulation component, where we do have that, uh, parking, there is the traditional landscaping component that we are providing. Again, that's where, um, those coming to the auction would park, potentially some employees, um, but the kind of box within that area is purely a staging area. It is not an area open to the public, it is not any, an area where anybody, um, can come in and walk around that is not authorized to do so. Um, the individuals that will be permitted in that area are CarMax employees only, um, they are trained to be moving the vehicles, to be inspecting the vehicles, um, that kind of thing. So with that, they do need some flexibility to maneuver cars as they feel needed, um, and I wanted to make sure that point was raised because, uh, with other car dealerships, um, you know, that's something that is very distinguishable and unique to CarMax. Um, I was actually driving around the other dealerships before I came here, and, um, with the United dealerships, I could drive around all throughout that site, uh, through the parking areas in the front with a couple limited exceptions where there should be circulation, but there are vehicles parked to block it. Um, there were obviously vehicles parked not within the parking spaces that were striped, um, and then going to the back to what was supposed to be their staging area. Again, I could drive around there, there was no restrictions, no non-trespassing signs, um, there was a small fenced-off area that was open gated, anybody could drive through there, um, and then an even smaller fenced-off area that, that one did have a gate on it that I could not, uh, access. So other car dealerships, you know, their staging areas, quote unquote, are more traditional parking areas where people can circulate from the general public. Um, that is not the case here. Our staging area, again, is going to be gated off, walled off, uh, very much limited to the authorized employees of CarMax that, um, are trained to be in these areas. Um, so again, just going into the landscape waivers a little bit in more detail, so this is what a traditional parking layout would look like within the staging areas. We would have the striping, you'd have your, um, terminal landscape islands, and when we account for this layout, um, it is about 8,000 square feet, just over 8,000 square feet of landscaping that would be provided. What we are proposing to do in its place is to shift that landscaping that's otherwise required, again, to the perimeter of the staging area. It actually results in more landscaping. It's about 3,500 square feet of additional landscaping that we're providing through this site. Um, and again, with the landscape plan, you can see the focus of that landscaping is along the perimeter of that staging area, along the circular access drives that go through the site where people will be able to circulate, um, you know, coming from 105th, going east and then north and then back west. Um, those are areas that could be circulated, so the landscaping is focused there to provide an attractive appearance, to help buffer the wall that will be provided, so you don't look into a staging area. Um, again, I think that's distinguishable from other dealerships where they're providing wire fencing, some shrubs, maybe the odd tree, you can look right in there and see a parking lot, essentially. It's mostly asphalt. It's the occasional landscape island with often just a palm tree that provides very little shade, very little aesthetic function. Um, we're not trying to skirt around the landscape requirements here, we're trying to make it really attractive, um, as well as meet the operational needs of CarMax. And so when we look at the landscape details, um, I think this is important because, again, we are going above and beyond what the code requires otherwise. Um, so we are providing, you know, quite a few more trees onsite, um, the code requires 160 trees, we're providing 421. Now, a lot of that was due to mitigational requirements, but still, that's almost, um, you know, three times, or more, more than double in excess of the code requirements. When we're looking at the vehicular use areas, um, we're required to put 26 trees, we're providing 47 trees, 31 palms, um, we're exceeding the native requirements. So, again, we're not trying to skirt the landscape requirements, we understand that landscaping is needed to create an attractive environment for environmental reasons, to provide shade. Um, so really, this is just the location of it that we're proposing to change. Um, here, we just have some renderings, um, and when we were discussing whether these actually needed to be updated, the comment that was made to me was that we're providing more landscaping than what's being shown here. Um, so this is a visual to show you essentially what it's going to be located in, if anything, we're actually providing more landscaping. So these are the views along the internal access drive, um, parallel to Southern Boulevard. I think this one is more reflective of the landscaping that's going to be provided, where you see the hedge, you see some taller trees, um, I believe they're live oaks, and some smaller shade trees as well. Here's just another image. And so again, contrasting that to what other dealerships have provided, because that's a comment that we've heard from staff. This is immediately next door. This is the Ford dealership. Um, this is their backup house, quote unquote, staging area. If you look at the 1.12 acre area identified on your screen, um, you can see that they're not parking within the traditional parking spaces. Sure, there are some rows of parking of cars that do, but then there's a row of three cars being parked next to each other where, uh, the spacing, the striping is for two cars. So their staging area might be striped a certain way, but is not being utilized that way. Um, the larger 2.53 acre area, um, is essentially, uh, almost the same as what we're providing. Um, we're proposing 2.6 acres of staging area, but you have 2.53 acres next door without any landscaping internal to that area. Again, they have terminal landscape islands outside of that, but I- Again, they have terminal landscape islands outside of that, but I truly believe that our perimeter landscaping is much more attractive than what's being provided here. Also, again, to distinguish the uses, you know, staff has raised and noted that other parking dealerships have provided staging areas with the terminal landscape islands. I don't know if at one point in, I believe, 2015, when Ford came in with their request, if this was intending to be a staging area. I understand, you know, car sales have changed with the impacts of COVID, and a lot of dealerships don't have the cars now, the inventory that they once had. But again, I was able to drive through this site. It was not restricted at all. It had Home Depot trucks parked in there, Geek Squad, general contractors, pool services, Orkin. It was not a staging area for vehicles being sold by the dealership. To my best guess, it was, you know, rented out spaces for people that needed to park their vehicles. And, you know, anybody that I assume rented a space could park there. So those individuals from the public, from businesses around, are parking their vehicles, need to have that circulation. It's not restricted. They need to be able to have pedestrian walkways and movements. That's not what we're proposing here. Our area is truly restricted to CarMax employees to meet their operational needs. And so here's an image from that shared access road, 105. You can see they have palm trees within those terminal islands. They're not providing much shade. They're not doing much for the environment. Again, we are proposing fairly significant trees along the perimeter that are going to provide quite a bit more shade, even internal to the staging area than this. And I'm going to hopefully fairly quickly run through the waiver criteria. I know it's a lengthy presentation and I appreciate your time, but I do feel it's important this evening. So this property does have special conditions and unique circumstances. It is located along Southern Boulevard. When you come down from the overpass, and there's very little visibility. That is the reason why prior to CarMax, this site had been vacant for quite some time, probably from all time. I don't know of a former site or a former use being located on this site. And that's because there is very little visibility coming down the overpass. It is not really appropriate for most commercial users because that visibility is important, especially along Southern Boulevard where you have a lot of vehicles traveling at high rates of speed. If they can't see you, then what's the point of being there in that location? That's why you have a lot of these car dealerships being situated in there, because their needs are not quite as extensive in terms of visibility as other commercial users. So again, just going down, this is, these are your views going down the overpass. So coming down, again, as you're almost towards the bottom, you still can't see the building until you're almost at the site. Even then, you can see the Royal Palm, so maybe you can understand that CarMax is coming up. But you're almost to the point of where the building is located before you see it. So in terms of visibility into the staging area, you won't have an issue as you come down the overpass. And again, as you're on the ground level, it'll be beautifully screened with all of the landscaping we're proposing. The special conditions do not result from the applicant. Again, the applicant's trying to develop Phase Two for a viable use for a company that does a lot for the community. Again, they have multiple charities that they work with. They allow employees of the local stores to choose charities that are close to their heart. So they really work with the community and are proposing to enhance the property, again, with a viable use and try and make it as attractive as they can. Granting the waivers do not confer upon the applicant any special privilege. The applicant is proposing to develop the property in a similar manner to other automotive uses. Again, the neighboring Ford dealership has 2.53 acres with zero landscaping. And to the points I noted before, it's not utilized as a traditional staging area. This is truly kind of a standard parking area at the moment, at least. In this instance, the applicant will be exceeding the tree and other plantings required by the code. Literal interpretation and enforcement of the terms of the provision would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other parcels in the same district. Again, other similar dealerships may have expansive staging areas with little landscaping. All of the other dealerships in the village along Southern Boulevard have also been granted various landscape waivers, some for terminal islands, some for perimeter buffer requirements. So it's not unique to CarMax to be requesting a landscape waiver. The other similarly situated uses have requested waivers from the landscape requirements as well. Here are the applicants proposing to exceed the code requirements otherwise and, again, provide an attractive appearance of the property that we think will enhance it as you're traveling from adjacent roadways. Granting the waiver is the minimum waiver that will make possible the reasonable use of the parcel land or building. We do feel it's the minimum landscape waiver. Again, we're proposing to relocate the landscape areas to the perimeter, not remove them. And it's entirely, we're still proposing to do all the plantings and then some. And granting the waiver will be consistent with the purposes, goals, and objectives of the policies of the plan. We do believe, to staff's point, that the landscaping that we are proposing in place of the terminal islands will provide an inviting and stable appearance, especially in the view corridors from Southern Boulevard. We're going to really enhance the landscaping proposed in this area. In locations where plants will be susceptible to injury by motor traffic, tree guards or other devices shall be provided where possible. We're providing the perimeter buffer wall and then landscaping on the other side of that to protect the landscaped areas. Where building sites limit plantings, the places of trees and shrubs in parkways or paved areas is encouraged. Although it's not in the staging area, we are proposing that landscaping along the internal circulatory drives where you could go along essentially the perimeter of the property through the site. And screening of service yards shall be accomplished by the use of walls, fencing, planting, or a combination of these. We are proposing a combination. We're proposing a wall, again, with that landscaping planted outside of the staging area. And personally, I think it will result in a far better and more attractive appearance than, you know, our neighboring dealerships. And granting the waiver will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Again, we're proposing to enhance the appearance of the community through this location of our landscape plantings. And then this goes on to the next item. So I'll leave it at that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any comment? Or is there any public comment? Anybody online?
There's one person online, but no comment.
Okay. All right. This ends public comment. Any commissioners have anything?
I have some questions. So you've said multiple times, so I just want to clarify that it is not going to be open to the public at all, though you said there's going to be auctions there, but not on that site?
So if I can bring it back to the, I don't know if my screen is still being shared, but the site plan. There is an auction building proposed. And so essentially, there's parking around the perimeter of the staging area that does meet the code requirements, will be open and accessible to the public. And then those members of the public going to the auction will go into the auction building, not the staging area. And I have John Thatcher here to maybe further address that comment.
Happy to jump in. John Thatcher, CenterPoint Integrated Solutions, consultant for CarMax. And yeah, as stated, that is correct. This area truly is CarMax's kind of back-of-house area, not open to the general public, only CarMax employees operating vehicles in that area. There is the auction building, as you can see on the, I don't know if you can see my cursor here. That doesn't show up there. That north side of this is that public parking area where auction attendees would park. So they are parking outside of there. The auction building is accessible directly from that public parking, but they are not within that staging area.
And also, are there any safety or financial impacts that not having these, well, having them make, if you have to have them in that staging area, would have on your operations?
Operationally, I think there's a few things, and Brian, definitely feel free to speak to this if necessary. But generally, the way that staging area operates, you know, it is, as has been said multiple times, a staging area that vehicles are staged as they're awaiting kind of different steps along the path. Maybe awaiting placement on the sales lot, or cars that have been purchased on trade-in that are awaiting disposition elsewhere, or cars that are awaiting auction or awaiting service. And kind of the mix and number of cars in each of those categories is fluctuating throughout the week. And so they like to kind of group them by path. And so the lack of striping benefits them operationally in terms of being able to have that flexibility to have larger grouping here, smaller grouping here, and then throughout the week, maybe that one grows, this one shrinks. The amount and number of cars and what they're doing with them and how they group them is changing throughout the week. And in addition to that, operationally, having landscape islands within that area. One, like I said, it's back-of-house area. We're moving all that screening to the outside perimeter, so no one's going to see in. But if you have that internal to the staging area, as stated previously, it is a secured area and there, you know, walls, gates, fences, access control. And in order to get landscape crews into that area, you have to bring them into that secured area and have them do their thing where we're trying to have only CarMax employees in that area. Along with that landscaping, you know, obviously comes the risk of damaged inventory in terms of, you know, lawnmowers bumping hard, we whacker soaring up rocks, things like that, trimming trees, branches, all that kind of stuff. Trees bring birds. Birds make messes of cars and, you know, increases the frequency of car washes and things of that nature. So there are operational impacts directly to it. And, you know, this is the way, as Brian mentioned, they've got 240 CarMax locations throughout the country. They're all set up with a staging area like this, that's not open to the public, not visible to the public, and allows them flexibility to operate the way they need to.
Mr. Chair, staff would like to add a comment to that as well. Just to clarify, this is a great question that you asked in regards to safety. Our codes, the village codes doesn't differentiate between staff or patrons that visit the dealership. So when you do have the terminal islands in place, it shows, our next presentation, which is the site plan, we speak a little bit more in detail. But when you do have the internal landscape island, it creates, and the parking area, the staging area being striped, it creates a clear definition of what's driving out, what's pedestrian, where you can walk and where you can stage your vehicles. Right now, the applicant is proposing an open area, 2.6 acres. So there is no sense of direction when you're back there. I do understand one of the point that the applicant makes is the fact that it'll only be restricted to employees. However, staff cannot just look at it saying that, okay, it's a restricted area. The general public may not be or have access to that area. Our code looks at every single person that's going to be within that area to make sure that there is no hazard, no conflicts between pedestrian pathway with vehicular circulations. Just also clarifying some of the comments that was made in regards to surrounding dealerships. In fact, and within the site plan, we do have an example of surrounding dealerships that shows exactly what the code requires and their compliance. In terms of landscape provided for these adjacent dealerships, there are landscapes that's provided. There hasn't been any waivers to our knowledge that says that they were not required to provide the terminal interior islands. However, there may have been waivers to request that a cluster of palms can be counted as a shade tree. So to our knowledge, those are the waivers that may exist on those surrounding dealerships. However, in terms of landscaping, landscaping were provided for those dealerships to our knowledge and in compliance with our code. So just want to clarify.
Thank you.
To that, I would say, I certainly understand staff's desire to safeguard the general public and pedestrians in general. And as noted at other dealerships where some of those areas are not as distinctly separated as they are with the CarMax facilities, where they're kind of co-mingled with public parking areas and there's really nothing preventing members of the general public, pedestrians, from entering that area. Here, there is. And so in this particular instance with CarMax, the way they're proposing to do it here and the way they do it across the country, that is a security area where only the CarMax employees are operating those vehicles. They're trained to do it safely and how to manage that area safely. And they do it successfully at their locations across the country. So certainly, you know, safety is important to all. We are providing, you know, emergency access through that area, fire striping, things like that. But in terms of pedestrians, the general public will not have the ability to enter that area.
Mr. Leland, do you have anything?
Yes. What's going to be preventing you guys from doing the exact same thing that you're accusing of the dealership next door of doing?
Well, there's a wall along the entire perimeter of the site. There's already a gate there. The dealership next to the store is very much less restricted in terms of that access. You know, personally, I think it's a code violation most likely. I mean, I don't know.
I don't think anybody here is questioning the security part of it that you're, because it's like any storage facility, what's stopping you from giving a key to somebody you're going to rent five spaces from? The other thing that we have never wanted in Royal Palm Beach is concrete or asphalt jungles. And that's why we have these landscaping buffers, is to keep the beauty of just like your existing is now. So that's where I think you're running into some headwind here.
Right. And I certainly understand the desire not to create a concrete jungle. I'm married to an arborist, so I hear about the importance of trees all the time. We are proposing trees in excess of the requirements. We're proposing landscaping in excess of the requirements. It's being shifted probably 24 feet. So instead of being, you know, next to a drive aisle, it's on the other side of it. But it's still being there. And quite honestly, I think in terms of the quality of the landscape materials that we're providing, it's going to provide more shade than these other dealerships. These other dealerships were approved in different manners. They may be providing the traditional parking lot striping, but if you go there on-site, they're not being utilized that way. They're being utilized in different manners. They're parking their cars across the parking rows in different ways. They're parking on the circulation areas. And these are areas that are easily accessible in front of their stores where cars, where pedestrians could be traveling. Our staging area is enclosed by this wall. So it is really not visible to the public, whereas, you know, for United, for example, you can circ- whereas, you know, for United, for example, you can circulate through that entire site. There's nothing in terms of the way it was developed that restricts access, both pedestrian or vehicular, except for, you know, one fence that often has an open gate. So, you know, I think just the manner in which they're being developed and proposed is quite a bit different. Also, CarMax has a different reputation. When you have a, a lot of these other dealerships, it's, you know, potentially a local dealer, maybe that's their one location, whether they have a pristine reputation or not is, is different. You know, you go from one for dealership to another, and they could differ drastically in terms of their appearance, in terms of their quality, in terms of the customer service you're getting. CarMax has a pristine reputation, and they're holding that across all of their stores. They're ensuring that each location operates, you know, in the manner that their headquarters, you know, prescribes. So it is something that is from the top down, that, you know, they want that consistency across all locations, they want their customers to feel confident that they know what they're getting when they come to a CarMax.
I have a question for staff. So for, I know there's a lot of other municipalities, Palm Beach County is one of them, I think, you know, Palm Springs, I think there's some other ones that have like a definition of bullpen parking. So Royal Palm doesn't have that in their code, correct?
We don't call it bullpen, so the term's escaping me, I think it's along the line of stagger and parking, but still, you are required to provide a terminal island separating those area that is designated for bullpen parking spaces. So having bullpen parking spaces doesn't give you the right to just ignore physical elements of the site that can help drivers or pedestrians understand movements between pedestrian circulation and vehicular circulations. When, when you have bullpen parking next to each other, once you see a terminal island as a driver separate those two, that clearly tells you, I can drive through there, or if I'm going to walk, I need to look both ways. And comparing to what the applicant is proposing, it's just 2.6 acres of, of concrete, and there is no sense of circulation. I do understand staff may be trained, however, it's from a safety standpoint, from the intent of the requirements of the codes, the application doesn't meet the requirements of the codes.
All right, I've got a question for you guys. So you're saying that there's going to be a, a lane marked for like fire, is there going to be like directional markings as well, so people can know, or sort of your staff can know which directions to drive through, or is it just going to?
The, the fire lane for emergency access, just to make sure that always remains clear, you can always get emergency vehicles in and out of that area, but beyond that, no striping is proposed, that's the way it's, it's done at, at every CarMax facility, and the CarMax employees are trained on how to operate vehicles in that area, how to group them according to the different paths they, those particular vehicles may be on that I mentioned earlier, and so that's the way it functions, there is, there is no proposed striping beyond that. And, yes, so hopefully that answers your question. And to the point earlier, with the, the look of vast expanse of, of, of paving, again, we, we are not trying to get out of doing this landscaping. If we put the islands in that area, they would be behind that, that screen wall we have and be even less visible. So we're, we're providing the same amount of landscaping, actually more, just pushed to that perimeter to, so that it is more visible and it screens that lot. And as you can see in the renderings and the, the photos from the overpass, we are 100% confident that from the outside looking in for the general public, you will not see that expansive paving. It's going to be a, a CarMax back of house area only. From the outside looking in, you'll have that nice multi-layered landscaping with the wall blocking your view of that area entirely.
Mr. Chair, just to help the board, if you guys want to, I do have a picture that does show the difference, there's a CarMax location in, in Boynton Beach. We do have an aerial photo of what the applicant is proposing, we can show you the layout, and we also have an, an aerial photo of one of the project site plan that was approved within the village that pretty much identifies the requirements of the code and, and complied with the requirements of the code, if it's the will of the chair. I can share my screen and show you that picture. Hopefully everyone can see it clear. So this is a, this is an example of the CarMax that's located at, in Boynton Beach, so this is exactly what the applicant is proposing. The only difference is on this, in this picture, it looks like the staging area has a different texture in terms of the drive aisles versus a project that's in the, that's in the village already, that identifies exactly if the applicant was to comply with the code. This is what it would look like with the clear definitions of the terminal island that clearly identify vehicular circulations within the site. So just to give you guys some sort of visuals of the difference between what's been proposed and what the code wants the applicant to provide. So this is what's here in the village, what we've approved, that meet our requirements, that meets the code, and this is an existing location for the applicant in Boynton Beach.
Is United also a used car sales? Not familiar with United.
Not sure.
I think it's just new cars at United.
It's just new cars?
Yeah, I don't know that they have the auction component either.
Yeah, I believe it's Toyota, Nissan, and one other, I was just driving there earlier, but.
Oh, it's the one that, it's, it's the Mazda, Mazda, Toyota, Nissan?
Correct, Mazda's the other one.
Okay, I didn't realize that was United, so it's all new cars, okay.
Okay, I have no questions, so. A motion on number 22-70.
I make a motion to deny application 22-70-LW.
Second.
And, uh, could we, Mr. Chair, could we have roll call vote on this one? And just a reminder, the motion on the floor and the second is for denial, so a vote of aye or yes would be a motion, or, excuse me, a vote to recommend denial to the village council. Mario, if you could call the role of the present members of the commission?
Sure. Chairman Adam Miller? Vice Chairman Philip Markey?
No.
Mr. Vice Chair, is that a motion, are you wanting to vote for denial or approval?
Denial.
Then your, clarify your vote to be an aye. A yes vote would be to deny, a no would be to approve.
Okay, yes, aye.
Commissioner David Leland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauren McGellin?
No.
Cara Derry, alternate one?
No.
Kamar Williams?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, the motion carries three to two, recommendation of denial carries.
Okay, thank you for your time.
They're, they're the next item too, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, number two on here. Okay, next on the agenda, application number 22-71, CarMax. The applicant, Center Point Integrated Solutions LLC, requesting site plan modification and architectural approval to construct a second phase of development on the site, which includes construction of a new second standalone building for which will be utilized for vehicle auctions use with the General Commercial GC zoning district for property located at 1051 Southern Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the applicants have been sworn any ex parte disclosures that need to be disclosed for this item.
No.
I spoke with the agent for the applicant.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
Mr. Chair, you can hold off on that until after the presentations and turn it over to staff. Turn it over to Josu for his presentation.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I do want to point out, this application actually does have components, and it, that needed support from the previous applications as it relates to the, um, on terminal island as well, the, the striping of the parking. So right off the bat, this application is not meeting the requirements of the code, just so you guys know, this was also contingent upon approval of the previous application, the landscape waiver, so with that said, I'll go ahead with my presentation, but obviously there will be deficiencies within this application, because it did not get the support that it needed from the previous application that just got denied. So the application before you is 22-71, SPM-AAR. The applicant is requesting site plan modifications and architectural approval to construct a second phase of development on the site, which includes construction of a new 4,216 square foot standalone building, which will be utilized for vehicle auction use within the general commercial zoning district for a property located at 10501 Southern Boulevard. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the build, for the building architecture, color, materials, and landscape plan. Just a little bit of history on, on this property, the village council approved a resolution number 17-30 to permit two special exception uses and architectural approval for an existing 6,000, 6,846 square foot building on May 17, 2018, with the, with the accelerated use for vehicle auction as well. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan, the new 4,216 square foot standalone building is highlighted in red, the remaining area are identified as vehicle staging area. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building architecture, color, materials, and landscape plan. Access to the site will be provided from two full access points off of 105th Avenue North. In addition, there will be cross-access connection with the shopping center to the east of the subject site. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan, the proposed staging area is highlighted in green. This slide illustrates the proposed building architecture, color, and materials. I'm just a quick recap, this is the picture that was shown earlier, this is an existing CarMax at, in, in the city of Boynton Beach, which is kind of like similar to what the applicant is proposing now, and just to, for reference, I will quote the sections of the code, the following are village code sections which are not being met by the applicant as currently proposed. Section 23-49, off-street parking requirements, so part B, location and design requirements, so part two, pedestrian access state that all properties shall provide safe, adequate, and direct pedestrian access between a building, structure, or use, in this case will be the vehicular auction area and its associated parking area. Staff also contends that without a well-stripped parking area along with defined vehicular drive aisles, the site plan cannot demonstrate that a safe, adequate, and direct pedestrian access is being provided to, around, and through the vehicle auction area. Section 23-49, off-street parking requirements, so part B, location and design requirements, so part three, internal circulation states that internal circulation area shall be designed as to not interfere with or pose a hazard to any parking spaces, loading spaces, or pedestrian movements. Village staff contends that without a well-stripped parking area along with defined vehicular drive aisle, the site plan cannot demonstrate that the internal circulation area do not interfere with or pose a hazard to pedestrian movement to, through, and around the vehicular auction area. Again, just a reminder, this is a, an existing property within the village of Royal Palm Beach, that with collaboration with staff, ended up providing a, a inventory area or staging area that meets the requirement of the code. Staff requests a recommendation of denial to the submitted, to be submitted to the village council regarding application number 22-71, SPM-AAR, and resolution number 23-28. This concludes my presentation, and thank you. So we also want to make sure that, we want to reiterate the fact that our code does not differentiate or distinguish between pedestrian parking or general public parking versus employee parking, so it looks, it's a wholesome approach to safety, so. This concludes my presentation, if you guys have any questions, I can turn it over to the applicant.
Sorry, I think the applicant has a presentation.
Go ahead.
Hi, for the record again, Christina Belenke. I, I do have a couple slides, but I don't think it's overly necessary to show them. We have the site plan and landscape plans that we've already talked about in length. You know, again, to staff's point, I think maybe it's something in the code that needs to be clarified, because this is not a traditional parking lot where you would have general circulation by the public or pedestrians, but we, we understand the points that staff has raised, we don't necessarily agree with them, but, you know, if you have any other questions this evening, we're happy to answer them, I know we've discussed this use at length already.
Well, I have a comment, you know, I've been to the Boynton Beach store, and, you know, where they show, you know, it basically looks like it's, it's tarred and then the center is cement, so when you're there, you have the feeling like, okay, I'm walking in the road, you know, the cars are here, this is clear, you know, why can't you do something similar to that here?
Um, I, I think we would be willing to explore that, I think, again, to distinguish this, I, I don't know particularly what.
Or could it be all cement, but, you know, either painted or different color or whatever?
I, I think we would certainly be willing to do that, I think we would be willing to entertain some striping, the landscaping is, is something that I don't believe we are able to commit to because of the operational needs, but if it would, you know, help with a recommendation of approval to either put a differentiating material in terms of the accessways versus the staging areas, parking areas, or maybe some striping to delineate that distinct, that distinction, we'd be willing to do something like that.
Does she have any questions? Chair?
I don't have any questions, since I guess most of this is reliant on passing the first one, just a comment, I understand that it's definitely, safety is important, whether it's staff or pedestrians, but I definitely see how it's an undue hardship to your operations, so that's just my public comment on the way that the code was read.
The, our comments from the public? Anybody online?
Uh, one person online, but no comments.
So, this closes the public section. So, can I have a vote, or a motion rather, on application number 22-71?
I'll make a motion that we deny application number 22-71 SPM AAR. My suggestion would be that you work these differences out with staff because the biggest issue here, again with me, is that we do not want concrete jungles. Just because you have a junkyard and you put a big fence around it, it still makes it a junkyard, you know, in common words. So, I think that's a bigger concern of the commissioners here.
And we've certainly heard all of the comments and appreciate them.
I second that motion.
And again, Mr. Chair, if we could ask Mario to do the roll call on this one. And again, the motion and the second on the table is a motion to recommend denial. So, a vote of aye or yes would be a vote in favor of denial. A vote of no would be a vote in favor to approve the application or to not deny. Thank you. Go ahead, Mario.
Chairman Adam Miller. Vice Chairman Philip Markey.
Aye.
Commissioner David Leland.
Aye.
Commissioner Lauren McGowan.
No.
Kara Derry, alternate one.
No.
Kamara Williams, alternate two.
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
Thank you again for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda, number three, application number 23-092 SE, The Learning Center. The applicant, The Learning Center, is requesting special exemption use approval to allow for a 31,959 square foot public and private academic institution within the general commercial zoning district for a property located at 2,000 Royal Palm Beach Boulevard.
Is the applicant present? Can you come to the podium, sir, and give your appearance, and I'll swear you in? Name for the record, sir?
Good evening. Corey O'Gorman, Place Planning and Design, 700 US Highway 1 North Palm Beach.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the commission and ask for ex parte disclosures on this item.
No.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Josu Ledger for the record. The application before you is 23-092. If you guys can see my screen. The applicant is seeking special exception use approval to permit a public or private academic institutions for grades pre-kindergarten through eighth grade. On the subject site, which is located in the general commercial zoning district, the school is seeking to occupy the former Western Academy location within the Royal Plaza South Shopping Center in order to service 150 children with autism. This slide illustrates the existing site plan and units where The Learning Center will be occupying. It's highlighted in red. And reviewing the proposed special exception, village staff considered compatibility with adjacent lane uses consistent with the village comprehensive plan and conformance with the village development standard for the general commercial zoning district, more specifically whether the proposed special exception is consistent with the standards of the village comprehensive plan, whether it complies with all development regulations of the village code, whether the special exception does not have any adverse environmental impacts which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions, whether the special exception does not have adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions, whether the proposed special exception does not have an adverse impact upon public facility, whether the design of the proposed special exception does not have any adverse impact on adjacent properties or is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood, or the proposed exception does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, is not a deterrent to the improvement of the development or adjacent properties. Staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to village standards and thereof is requesting, therefore requesting a recommendation of approval of application number 23-092, special exception, and resolution number 23-27, subject to all conditions of approvals outlined in the resolution. And this concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'll be willing to answer.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation, or anything you want to say?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have a formal presentation. I would just like to say that we appreciate staff's work and their assistance through the process. We agree with the staff recommendation. We accept the conditions. I am joined this evening with the executive director and one of the board members from The Learning Center, and we are here to try to answer any questions that you may have. We sincerely appreciate your consideration and respectfully request a recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. The chairmen, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Leland, no, I have nothing. Okay, can I have a motion to approve application number 23-092?
Mr. Chairman, before a motion is made, could we solicit public comment on this item?
Any public comment? Anybody online?
One person online, but no comment.
All right, this closes public applications. So, again, so...
Chair, I move approval, application number 23-
Number 23-092.
I'll second.
You can do just all in favor on this one.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Okay, well, that concludes the Planning and Zone Commission meeting for the 14th of August. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 26, 2018. Next on the agenda is a planning, local planning agency meeting agenda.
You don't have to do roll call, Mr. Chair. You could just let the record reflect that the same members are still present on the dais.
Okay. Application number one, number 22-63, Royal Palm Brewing. The applicant, Royal Palm Brewing Company, is requesting a text amendment to the village zone and code to amend section 26-75.2 and 26-89 to eliminate the current prohibition on outdoor seating and patron congregation directly abutting the residential zoning district which would allow for such use, subject to variance approval by village council, and to increase the square footage limitations for the brew pubs, microbreweries, from 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. Specifically requested for a property located at 543 North State Road 7, Suite 103.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicants are at the podium, so with your permission, we'll proceed with this item. But, at the end of this meeting, after the next item, if we could just go back to the minutes for approval prior to ending the meeting. Can you gentlemen state your names for the record?
Yeah, George Shadka.
Thank you. Your name, sir?
Jeffrey Shadka.
Can you raise your right hands for me? Do you both swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
We do.
Thank you very much. And there's no need for ex parte on this item, so I'll turn it over to staff, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The application before you is 22-63 Z-Tex. The applicant is requesting a text amendment to the village zoning code to amend section 26-75.2 to eliminate current prohibition on outdoor seating and patron congregation directly abutting residential zoning districts which would allow for such use, subject to a variance approval by village council, and to increase the square footage limitation for brew pubs and microbreweries from 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. Specifically requested for a property located at 543 North State Road 7, Suite 103. Just a brief history, this item came before the board, and it went to council. However, when it got to council, council felt like such a requirement should not be through the special exception process. It should be a variance. So, this is why this item is back before you. So, the main changes for this item is, instead of microbreweries, brew pubs to be required, adjacent residential to be required to go through a special exception, they will be required to go through a variance process instead. So, just to give you guys a sense, this looks familiar to some of you.
And Josu, could I just make one more comment, just for the commission's information? The item was actually not heard by the village council. It was on the agenda. The applicants were not there. It was postponed to a time certain, so it was not actually disposed of by the village council. But, as Josu said, there's been some changes to the request. So, it's back before you as the commission again tonight, and it will proceed again to council later this week, actually. Thank you, Josu.
Thank you. This slide illustrates a summary of the proposed text amendment. The additions are underlined and deletions are stricken. Staff requests a recommendation of approval of application number 22-63 Z-Tex and ordinance number 1036 be submitted to village council. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Do you have a presentation for us?
We had one last time. We can go over it again. I think we did a good job. Staff did a good job explaining. We, again, we're here, I think, three weeks ago or something like that. It's good to be back. What they did is, like you said, they went to the council. We weren't aware of the meeting, so we missed it, but we're here and there. But, what happened is they said to go back and do it as a variance. So, we redid application. We resubmitted it. Essentially, what we can do, I mean, I have, I think we had the presentation before. I don't know if it's still here or not. But, again, we go with their recommendation. Again, we're going from 5,000 to 6,000 square feet. We'll probably be doing this again in a year or so when we go to expand into other bays or other areas as they come available. As far as the outdoor seating, it's limited to 300, less than 300 square feet. I think it's 189 square feet at the furthest point away from neighboring Bellatora, and maximum of, I think, 12 people capacity for outdoor seating at this point. If there's any questions for us or any concerns, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
The people in Bellatora, have they been notified of this, or any-
We have a, I can answer that. I'm sorry. Or, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the applicant submitted within their applications a actual letter from the HOA, so-
Yeah, we have a recommendation from the HOA to pursue our outdoor seating, and also, we are attendees of their fall festivals every year.
And how close are you to the residence?
220 feet to the resident, but 159 feet, if I recall, to the road that's directly in front of us, which is what comes into question because that's a, Bellatora owns the road. It's not really so much the homes. I think there's one or two homes that were within the circumference that we had to send letters out to. The other one is, obviously, we have our neighbors, one's a vacant space, and the other one's a yoga studio three suites down. But, yeah, other than that, it's, everybody knows. I think this is the third time they've gotten letters. We've had to send them twice, one for initial, and then when we redid it, we had to send them over again. And then also, when we first opened, we had done it too, and there's never been any questions or concerns.
And as you said, the 300-foot notices went out for all of these meetings. Of course, a legal ad went out for tonight's meeting as well, and for the village council meetings as well.
And, Mr. Chair, for the record, this item is scheduled to be heard by a village council on Thursday, August 17.
Any questions?
I have a question. Did you bring us any samples?
You know where to get them.
I have a question for staff. Is the limited outdoor seating something that was proposed by the village, or is part of the variance, or?
So, I believe the last conversation we had between the applicant and what village, I think the applicant wanted more, but based on others or the specific request, what they needed it for, village staff believed that the number that is provided is adequate or appropriate for that.
Final comment. Love to see local businesses expanding, and definitely post-COVID times, love to see outdoor seating.
And this helps us out tremendously, for sure. Absolutely.
I'm going to renew my comment that I made the last time that you guys were here, which is, I'm not in favor of limiting this use to a square footage because I'm hoping that they're successful and they don't have to come back to us. And then the second comment that I have that I'm concerned about making this a variance is that they're now going to have to prove hardship, that it's not self-created. And I'm kind of concerned about that aspect of turning this into a variance.
I'll say duly noticed.
So, I can say from our aspect, we were asked, do you want a variance, do you want a special exception? And please don't take this the wrong way, but I make beer for a living. I don't know the difference between one thing or another. I don't know if you do. I don't want to speak for you. But, the whole thing is like, when we go at this, like I told Bradford and I said in our meeting with Mitty and everything else, our biggest thing, we want people to drink beer outside. That's really what it is. I don't, if a variance, special exception, zone text amendment, it has been the most confusing 18 months of my life. But, with that said, you know, they have all worked very well with us, and we're just being, we're hoping that we're being led in the right direction. Now, if we get to council and they say you need to prove a hardship, I can show them my 12-year-old truck out front, and maybe that'll help, but I don't know. I could show my paychecks. That's probably even better.
That's why I'm concerned because like hardship can't be-
Because that's something I didn't know about until I just mentioned it.
Hardship can't be monetary, and it can't be self-created. So, I'm concerned about turning this into a variance rather than keeping it as a special exception that we previously voted on. That's my, that's my comment.
No, it is. So, what is a hardship? I'll ask a question back.
So, it's a different set of criteria. The previous text amendment you had was for special exception. The code has codified criteria that you have to meet to get a special exception approval granted. Similarly, in the village code, there's variance criteria. The criteria are a little bit different, but one of those criteria is hardship. So, to her point, it is a different, a different set of criteria and a different legal burden. But, as you heard at the council meeting, the issue in the code is that when the code was written for outdoor seating, there was an express prohibition on this outdoor seating abutting residential. You cannot vary a prohibition. So, had the prohibition not been in the code, the variance would have been allowed to be applied for whether or not the applicant came forward or not. The issue now is that they want to get approval for this. They cannot get a variance to the prohibition as drafted. So, a code text amendment is still required to even allow for a variance option.
So, there's no outdoor seating allowed anywhere in the village?
It's expressly, it can be. It's only expressly prohibited adjacent to residential, abutting, directly abutting residential, correct?
Unless it were a restaurant or a bar. If we didn't make our own beer, then we could have outdoor seating. That's just the way it's written. The other thing is, and you bring up a great point, and the 6,000 square feet, I know we've been approached multiple times, whether it's people in the council, customers, we've even thought it ourselves. It just never worked out. The Friendly's building, right? It's there empty. It's there vacant. There's, it's an eyesore. We couldn't take that over right now. If it were to come available and our landlord said, you can get out of your lease, they said, we'll do the build-out for you, we technically couldn't move there right now because it's too much square footage for a commercial zone, commercial, general, commercial zone. So, these are the things that we look at. And like I said, it'd probably be another year, maybe six months. Who knows? It will come back and we'll say, okay, how much is the end suite plus the outdoor seating, whatever else, and we'll come back with another thing for 12,000 square feet or whatever we want at that point. And we'll do that. We don't have a problem. We have the, you know, the layout and how to do that now anyway for the application. But, these are, these are the struggles that we're faced with currently. And it appears that we have more to talk about and figure out for the next two days from now. So, thank you for- And it appears that we have more to talk about and figure out for the next two days from now, so thank you for giving me the heads up on that. Hardship is always that you're a business owner, right?
Yeah.
And it is self-inflicted, as they said.
So, is there not another, is there not another way to get around this than a variance, is there not another section of the code that could be modified? Instead of it?
Not, not as drafted, because it's an express prohibition, and back then, when the code was written, that was by design, and that was the intent of the village council and of, of this commission, I think, as the applicant said in his previous meeting, and, and, um, I think he might have mentioned at the beginning of his presentation tonight, but circumstances have changed post-COVID, right? So, there's real-time experience now, so, that's why the requests, that's why they're making the requests, I presume.
Yeah, and that's exactly right, we, the only reason we're making the request, well, I've mentioned it last time, I'm trying to remember what I said and what I didn't, and what I wrote down, but the, the biggest thing for us is that we didn't have it before, so it's very simple to tell our patrons and customers, like, ah, we don't have outdoor seating, village doesn't allow it, we put it on you guys, and then they say, okay, and we move on, and whatever, then all of a sudden, we got it, and then we had it for a while, with COVID and everything else, and then we submitted our, we submitted a, a special event permit for our anniversary, and they said, holy cow, you still have it, and then pulled it away, like, next day, to take it out of there, so they took it out, and now all of a sudden, everybody's like, what the heck, where did it go? And, and now we're trying to gain back customers that we've lost from that, and we'd say revenues are down fifteen percent year-over-year, so, we're being honest and everything, so there is a hardship there, and a minute that happens, so, we can go to World of Beer down the road, they got outdoor seating, why would I go to the brewery? I can drink their beer there, so, these are the things that we're, we're facing right now, and this is why we're standing here, eighteen months later, and almost nine thousand dollars, so, that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any comment from the public? Anybody online?
One person online, but no comment.
Okay, that'll land the public. Uh, can I have a motion?
I'm gonna recommend approval of application number twenty-two sixty-three, um, in the interest of letting them move forward, but I just want a voice to staff that I think that, as far as the code goes, I think that it's better to kind of look ahead and be more, like, be more of a, like, look forward into the future and be more planner than reaction to the applications that are coming in the door, just kind of a thought as far as the square footage, it's just my, that's just my two cents.
I'll second. Okay, I, I, I move to approve it.
You have a motion and a second on the table, Mr. Chair, you actually, as chair tonight, cannot make a motion, just if you could call for all in favor, and then any opposed?
Okay, all, we have a, we have a second in, all I need now is a motion, all four.
A vote, all in favor of, any?
All in favor of.
There you go.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed to the motion? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, guys.
All right, congratulations. And let's step back here, I need a, a motion to approve the, uh, minutes of the, uh, last meeting.
Make a motion to approve minutes from June twenty-seventh, LPA meeting.
All right, thank you.
All in favor, Mr. Chair, if you could call for all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Chair, thank.
Next item, application twenty-three dash oh forty-seven, SCPA, Paint Lux Auto Body, the applicant Vincent Chaffer of HM two V Incorporated, on behalf of AMG Business Enterprise LLC, requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future of the land use designation of one of the parcels totaling zero point two three five plus acres from the village open space land use designation to the village industrial land use designation for a property located at sixty-eight forty-six Seminole Palms Drive.
And this is a comprehensive plan amendment, so, the applicant is here, she can come to the, or excuse me, he can come to the podium, um, if, whenever he'd like, um, but you can turn it to staff for presentation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the application for you is twenty-three dash zero four seven, small-scale comprehensive plan amendment. The applicant is seeking a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation of one parcel totaling approximately point two three five acres from the village open space and land use, land use designation to the village industrial land use designation for a property located on sixty-eight forty-six Seminole Palms Drive. The subject property is located on the south side of Seminole Palm Drive, approximately point fourteen miles east of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, and the subject property was previously owned by the village of Royal Palm Beach, and was recently purchased by AMG Business Enterprise LLC. As part of that agreement for the purchase and sale of real property, the terms as to how the property is, um, is to be used, um, is outlined in section one point zero three, and it reads as follow. Section one point zero three, property information and buyer's intended use. The buyer intends to incorporate the subject property referred to as the West Parcel into its existing automobile and or watercraft repair and or service facility located at five hundred Royal Palm, Royal Plaza Road, Suite D, the intended use. Also, within section one point zero three, property information and buyer's intended use of the agreement, the buyer acknowledges that in order to develop the intended use, um, a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation, which is this application, um, is required, and also other subsequent applications to include a rezoning, special exception approvals, simple modifications approval, architecture and aesthetic review approval, and building permit, collectively referred to as the approvals in this agreement, um, just an update to date, the applicant submitted applications for all required applications stipulated in the said agreement. The applicant has also indicated in their justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop the property for the purpose of enlarging the existing Pentlux facility parking lot, the justification statement further states that no storage or any material and or equipment, disabled vehicles of any kind will occur. And reviewing the proposed future land use map amendment designating the parcel as industrial, village staff considered compatibility um, with adjacent land uses consistent with the com- consistently with the village comprehensive plan, um, whether the action requested will contribute to conditions of public hazards as described in the sanitary, solid waste drainage and portable water, sorry. Sorry, portable water sub-element of the comprehensive plan, whether it will exacerbate any existing public facility capacity, um, capacity, the deficit as described in the traffic circulation element, um, whether it will generate public facility demands that may be accommodated by capacity increases planned in the five-year schedule of improvement, whether the request conforms with future land use as shown on the future land use map. Staff requests the recommendations of approval be submitted to the village council regarding application number twenty-three dash zero four seven, SCPA, and ordinance number ten thirty-seven, um, this concludes my presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Does the applicant have any presentation, or?
Good evening, uh, my name is Vincent Chaffer with HM two V, uh, no, we don't have my presentation.
Okay, thank you for your patience tonight, it's been a long night.
Patiently.
Uh, any public comment? Sure, you don't wanna say some? Oh. Anybody online?
One person online, no comment.
Okay, that closes the public comment, uh, request a motion on?
Uh, motion to approve, uh, application, uh, two three dash zero se-, or zero four seven, SCPA. I'll second.
All in favor, if you could ask for all in favor, Mr. Chair?
All in favor. Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the time.
Okay, this concludes, uh, the local planning agency meeting agenda. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. Okay, the next item is a public art advise-, advisory board meeting agenda.
Same drill on this one, Mr. Chair, you can just have the record reflect that the same members are still present, and you have a changing of the guards for staff, and you can move on to the minutes if you'd like.
Okay, item number one, application number.
Want to approve the minutes, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, and we need the approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April seventeenth public art advisory board meeting.
Second.
All approve?
Aye.
Okay, passes five zero. Application number twenty-three dash oh twenty-two, AAR, Crossroads Shopping Center, Publix, Public Art, the agent Holland and Knight LLP, on behalf of Crossroads R two G Owner LLC, is requesting an architectural and aesthetic review of the commission's purchase installation of a eleven-foot, five-inch-high, four-foot, six inches wide, and two feet, nine inches deep steel, stainless steel sculpture, titled Growing Number Three by artist Wenqin Chen to fill the art in the public spaces required for the property located at one one six oh one Okeechobee Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the applicant is here, could you state your name for the record?
Yes, good evening, Jana Loda with the Law Firm of Holland and Knight, with offices at five one five East Las Olas, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Can you raise your right hand for me, and I'll swear on staff if he needs to be sworn in, do you both swear affirm to sell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, and I'll turn back to the art, uh, advisory board and ask for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
All right, good evening, commissioners, how you doing, so, the application before you is twenty-three dash zero twenty-two, uh, see, you can see it on there. Uh, the applicant is requesting architectural approval for the installation of a public art sculpture to meet their art in public places requirement according to section twenty-six dash seventy-five point five of the village code relating to application twenty-one dash zero two, SPM AAR, Publix at Crossroads. The current slide that you see illustrates, um, property at one one six zero one Okeechobee Boulevard. Uh, this slide illustrates a bird's eye view of the whole property where the Publix renovation happened. This slide illustrates the location of the public artwork on the site plan at one one six zero one Okeechobee Boulevard, um, at the intersection of, uh, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Okeechobee Boulevard. This next slide is a little bit more information on the artist, uh, the artist's name is Wenqin Chen, he, uh, has a background in the arts, went to School of Art and Design, Fuzhou University, I believe, Academy of Art and Design in Xinhua University, and an MA from Winchester School of Art, University of Southampton in the UK. Wenqin Chen is a professional artist and teacher in Xia Mei University. Since the two thousands, Wenqin Chen has used Chinese calligraphy, sculpture, and installation to explore the relationship between life, art, and their diversity. Wenqin Chen explores philosophical questions on life and the nature of time through elegant and abstract forms that aim to create a moment of pause for the viewer to contemplate the human experience. Wenqin Chen's work is often displayed in public environments, and has created several unique sculptures that serve as permanent public art installations. This next slide demonstrates different sculptures created by the artist, um, you can see the title underneath them, and they're, uh, in place, installed in several public locations. This slide here demonstrates a digital rendering of the proposed sculpture for this site. The artwork is entitled Growing Number Three, and created by the artist Wenqin Chen. The sculpture, as stated, is eleven-foot, five inches high by four feet, six inches wide, and two feet, nine inches deep, and it's made of stainless steel. This next slide, uh, demonstrates several angles of the sculpture. Uh, the sculpture will stand on a concrete base that will include light fixtures, which will illuminate the sculpture from dusk to midnight, per the village code section on lighting. This slide in front of you, uh, illustrates a digital rendering of the dimensions of the stainless steel sculpture, along with the concrete base that will serve as its anchoring system, and that is a digital rendering of it in place. Again, this is a slide of a digital rendering, uh, without the dimensions, a little more cleaned up, um, in the northeast corner of Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Okeechobee Boulevard, uh, and meeting all requirements, staff is recommending approval of application number twenty-three dash zero two two, AAR, as submitted. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Does the applicant have any presentation or anything?
Um, we, we do have a brief presentation, but, um, it's, I know it's a late evening, so I can actually just do a brief supplemental presentation to, uh, Mr. Pizzano just said, just to give you a little bit more flavor on the artwork, um, if you'd like, and I'll just, uh, quickly proceed, uh, real quickly, um, again, we're here tonight, this is the public art piece that's required in connection with the rebuild of the Publix, which is, you can probably see the beautiful building, uh, that's been constructed across the street. Uh, we've been working real hard with staff to, to come up with a piece of artwork that it would be worthy of the corner. Um, we appreciate staff's direction in that effort and endeavor, and we're before you tonight with the piece of art known as the Growing Number Three. Um, I know that you've already been provided some information regarding the background of the artist, but just a little bit about the sculpture. The, uh, the sculpture before you tonight is part of, um, Wenqin Chen's series, the Life Continues in Space series, which was, uh, created by the artist back in two thousand and ten. Um, the series itself, and I'm gonna get a little probably, because here I'm trying to wrap my head around it a little bit, it's to convey the internal movement of substance in space, uh, so, the sculpture basically records a portion of that movement in space. Uh, the theory behind it is that the human view of time and space is that when substance arises, space arises. So, what you're seeing in the sculpture is basically the movement of sus-, of substance in time, does that make sense? Um, and as I look at it, it's almost like the eternity, um, partially part of growing, that's how I, when I see it, and like all art, as you know, when you look at it, people, everyone that looks at it will come away with a different feeling or thought process, uh, behind it. Uh, from his series, um, Life Continues in Space, we selected the Growing Number Three sculpture that was presented to you earlier. Um, again, it's, um, the art, just so you know, it's being acquired via a broker, Sachi Art, um, so we weren't able to get a rendering directly from the artist, so what you see is our best attempt using Photoshop and taking measurements that are out there to give you, uh, an approximation of what this will look like at the corner. Um, again, the, uh, dimensions, I know, have been read several times, the overall height with the base will be approximately thirteen feet tall, that includes the eighteen inch tall concrete base, um, in one of the, uh, the photo shops that were, was given to you, we actually, to help give you perspective, we measured the pedestrian light that's at the corner of Okeechobee and Royal Palm, which sits at eight feet, eight inches tall, to kind of, again, give you an accurate perspective of the height of the overall sculpture. Um, again, the piece is composed of steel on stainless steel, um, and will be, which will be welded and secured to a steel square base, which will then be anchored to the concrete base, which will have a much larger footer, um, under the ground. Um, it'll be illuminated with in-ground lighting, that will be illuminated from dusk to midnight, per the village code. Um, I know in the presentation in the backup, it gave you the breakdown of the estimated costs, uh, of the artwork and the other related expenses. Um, and right now, our timeline, which is probably gonna be modified, I need to update that before Thursday, I thought we were going to council in September. that before Thursday. I thought we were going to council in September, but I understand this will be before council this coming Thursday night on the seventeenth, um, which hopefully will speed up our time. We're anticipating, uh, once the artwork hopefully is approved by the village council on Thursday, uh, within two weeks, we'll be able to make payment and get fabrication drawings from the artist, which will then be reviewed by, um, our client as well as the village to confirm conformance with the artwork, which will then go into a two-month fabrication and then a two-month worth of shipping because the piece is coming from China. So we're working towards hopefully getting this installation now with the revised date, hopefully by the end of the year. So with that, um, we just look forward to your recommendation of approval. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that we may have.
I don't think anybody has any questions. So thank you for your presentation. Uh, any comment from the public? Anybody online?
One person online, but no question, no comment.
I don't know why they stay there. They like your voice.
Yeah.
Well, I request a motion on, uh, item twenty-two dash, twenty-three dash oh two-two.
I'll make a motion that we accept application number twenty-three dash oh two-two, uh, AAR.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Sorry, you had such a late night?
Yeah.
It's all fine. It was very interesting. And thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
That concludes the, uh, Public Art Advisory Board meeting agenda. Next meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You didn't have to warn any of the meeting.
Huh?
You can just call the meeting adjourned, sir.